Good evening and welcome to the Belchertown Board of Selectmen's meeting. And we will begin our meeting in the usual fashion with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to break from our usual pattern and we will not entertain minutes or documents or anything along those lines. We really just have two items in front of us. First, if we could, Mr. Elske, if you could, at the executive session motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that at the conclusion of this meeting, that we go into executive session on the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 2. At the conclusion of that meeting, we will not return to open session.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And by roll call vote, since this is an executive session, Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Elske?
Yes.
And the chair votes yet as well. Motion passes 4-0-0. Now, we will have before us is the process and procedure for the recall petitions. Everyone's probably very well aware, we've had recall petitions that have been sent in, one for Mr. Selectman Berry, one for Selectman Elske, and one for Selectman Archibald. And I, as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, have been given a notification by the Assistant Town Clerk that the recall petitions, all three in fact, have in fact been certified by the Town Clerk. As a result, from a procedural aspect, and I guess I'll start with you first, Mr. Berry, the Board of Selectmen, and I as chairman representing the Board of Selectmen, have an obligation to notify you of the certification. And this memorandum indicates that the certification has been in fact certified by the Town Clerk. And as such, you have the option to tender your resignation, if you so desire, within five days. Or if you choose not to resign, then Board of Selectmen can set a recall election. So do you have a comment or any questions?
Well, the first count I make is it's signed by Assistant Town Clerk, not the Town Clerk.
Correct.
The Town Clerk was out of town, I guess. Second, I just want to, just for purposes of clarification, the recall petitions were signed and certified as a result of an affidavit being filed. The current processes and the legal processes, that someone has to file an affidavit. And Paul Anziano, 16th Annual, Belchtown, Mass., sent a signed affidavit under penalty of perjury to the Town Clerk on February 10th, stating, "I, Paul Anziano, 16th Annual, seek to recall James A. Berry for the Belchertown Board of Selectmen, as I believe he is making a decision contrary to will and common good as citizens of Belchertown, is assigned under penalties of perjury." So my first comment is, I think that the recall process that we passed at town meeting some years ago certainly did not envision a recall process based on a decision-making process. And as I recall during the debate of the recall process, it was intended to, for cause, for good reason, if a selectman is not up for reelection soon, and you need to get rid of this selectman, well, then there's a recall process. But in terms of using the recall process, because you disagree with a decision of a member of the Board of Selectmen, or the member of the school committee, or the member of the planning board, I don't think that was the intention of it. And quite frankly, I think it's an inappropriate use of the process. I clearly will not resign my position. I refuse to be bullied out of this position, because a few people don't like the way I make a decision, and twisted the process to use this to push us out of office. So I absolutely inform you officially that I will not resign my position, and you can call for a recall election if you so must.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Now, at this point, the Board of Selectmen, or at least the three members, obviously, for obvious reasons, Mr. Berry will recuse himself from the actual setting of the recall election time and date. And just as, I guess, further information is per the recall acts, Chapter 126 of the 1997 Acts, to be specific, if a town election falls within 85 days of a certified petition, and in this case, where Mr. Berry has indicated that he chooses not to resign, the Board of Selectmen, at their discretion, can choose to co-mingle, if you will, the regular scheduled local election with the recall election. I personally think that that would make a lot of sense. It would save the town quite a bit of money. It would certainly, I think, be easier for the general public to, in essence, be able to vote at once and at one time. But I will open it up for comments from Mr. Barnett or Mr. Elske.
We really have no choice but to go ahead with the selection. We'll just invoke on the recall. That being the case, I certainly want to make certain that it's done at least cost, with expense, with problem to the towns. And it seems to be logical that it should be placed on the electoral ballot. Otherwise, if we don't do that, then we have to have a special election to do exactly the same thing. So, are you looking for the motion?
I want to take all the concerns.
And Chairman, I would move that the Board of Selectmen, I direct the Town Clerk to include in the municipal election of May 16th, an additional ballot for the recall of James A. Berry, with the additional, trying to put all this together, with the additional part to that same question on the vote, that persons who are intending to replace Mr. Berry, if he is in fact recalled, put their name in for his replacement. So it would be a two-part ballot. It would be a yes or no question on the recall, and then if it turns out to be yes, then the persons who want that position would get the most votes, then would be elected to take his place. Parenthetically, if this were to happen in this election, they would be off for about two hours, because there is a, he is up for a regular reelection.
Correct.
But the petitions are actually 823 petitions, sedatories to that petition requesting that, and we had no choice but to do this. It's the law.
Okay. And as you had indicated with the two steps or two parts of the ballot, that's all in accordance with the way the Chapter 126 Recall Act has spelled it out. Okay. So motion has been made to set the date of the recall at May 16th, co-mingled, if you will, with the local town election.
As part of the ballot.
Yes.
Chairman, I second the motion.
All right.
And I want to kind of explain what's going on here. This is, from a purely legal perspective, I even got a phone call this morning from a Belchertown citizen who was saying, "How can you have three of the five selectmen being recalled? You can't vote on your own recall, and how do you deal with that?" Is quorum issue? Good question, I said, but it's one that we referred to call complement and page the Town Council. And they kind of jump through hoops to come up with a solution, but it does make sense. And that's why Mr. Berry is out of here. Basically, what happens is, because Mr. Archibald is not here, is that three of us will be voting on Mr. Berry's recall. Then I will get up and leave, and Mr. Berry will come back, and the three of them will vote on my recall, and then I guess the four of us can all vote on Mr. Archibald's. These kinds of legal opinions and stuff, and there's, you know, two pages of legal opinion, which they probably never had to face before, on how to recall a majority of the members of the Board of Selectmen anywhere in the state, is serious business, and it's expensive, and it's been expensive to have the staff of the Town Clerk go through all these petitions and stuff. But it's also important that in these particular times, that somebody around here act like grownups. We have to run a town, no matter what problems we face. And for that reason, I intend to make sure that there's not a two-to-one vote that could be confusing. I intend to vote here in support of this, so it's a 3-0 vote. I believe Mr. Berry is going to do the same. That way, at the very least, the town won't be facing any other legal issues or whatever. I mean, in principle, we could be ridiculous about it and get up and leave. There'd be no quorum, and the town would be in total chaos. Instead, what we are, what Mr. Berry and I, the four of us, are committed to allowing this town government to proceed and solve the problems of Belchertown, and do the best we can to prevent these recall petitions from interfering with the satisfactory running of the town government. These are very difficult times. We have budget issues coming up. We've been telling the town for two years that fiscal year 2012 is probably going to be our most difficult budget time. We don't need this kind of diversion, spending our time and spending the town's energy, emotional energy, money energy, on recall petitions. But it's important for us, we've sworn to act as selectmen to the best of our ability, and included in that is making difficult votes, including against ourselves, in effect. So I intend to vote yes on this motion.
Okay. So motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further questions nor comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, let the record show, motion passes 3-0-0. So with regards to Mr. Berry and his recall petition, the Board has notified in writing Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry has on record indicated that he chooses not to resign, and the Board of Selectmen have set the actual election date for May 16th. So in essence, that concludes our business for the petition, the recall petition for Mr. Berry.
And let me get him.
Please get him in.
Mr. Berry?
Okay. Now, once again, as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I have been notified and served with a written notification from Assistant Town Clerk Colleen Tootwood-Burty that a certified recall petition for Mr. Elske has been submitted and certified. And as a result, actually, sort of the paper there, as an official notification, similar to Mr. Berry, per the Acts of 1997, you have five days in which to indicate whether or not you choose to resign, or you can state that you choose not to resign, and which points the Board of Selectmen will then set a recall election time and date. Do you wish to resign, sir?
I do not wish to resign. I intend to fight this recall vigorously. Let me give at least some insight into why I think this recall is a very bad thing for the town, having the election. Last night, I got a phone call from a town resident who was very supportive. He was saying to me that there's a lot of interest in, throughout the state, in what's going on here in Belchertown. He is, not exactly sure, but he's, it would seem that he's a freelance writer for some of the newspapers in Boston. He said that he thought that there might be interest in Boston and in the other big newspapers for a story about what's happening here in Belchertown. Would I be willing to talk to the press? Well, I'm always willing to talk to the press. I'm always willing to talk. But what I said to him is, "I'm a Belchertown selectman, and it's my job to try to make Belchertown look as good as it can be. And I don't want to participate in something that will make Belchertown a laughing stock, particularly among people in Boston who make so many important decisions about what goes on here." So I discouraged him from going forward with this particular idea of getting more press coverage, particularly outside the region. I then was, actually on Town Business this morning, was talking to a person who is not a resident of Belchertown, but does a lot in the area of economic development. And this person, after we had our conversation about Town Business, this person was asking me about what's going on here. And I said that I thought that the people of Belchertown would vote against the recall. I got over 60% of the vote in the last election. I think Mr. Berry got, I don't know, 80% or some number like that. We still have a lot of support. We've done a lot of really good things in the time since our elections. She said, "But do you know how really bad this is for the town? There are private investors who think about coming into places like the state school and other areas. And what they do is they try to put together these complicated economic packages to create economic opportunity, to create jobs in the town. There are a number of towns throughout America that have an anti-business reputation. You do not want Belchertown to be one of those towns." And what this person said is that when you think about businessmen looking for places to invest, they want to know that they can have confidence in the promises made by Boards of Selectmen, the official executive body of the town. They want stability. They don't want to be in the middle of a three- or four-year project, and then all of a sudden, somebody doesn't like the votes of the Board, and they go ahead and change them. We need stability. That's why we have three-year terms. That's why we have three-year overlapping terms. And while there are good reasons to have a recall, if somebody commits a crime, if somebody doesn't show up at work, I mean, there are all kinds of reasonable reasons to have a recall, but because you disagree on one of the votes, as you did. So this person said to me, "You're going to be talking to businesspeople about development. You're going to be going to the state government and asking for projects, support for projects. You're going to be going to private foundations and asking for grants. These people want to know that the entities that they're giving them money to are stable, and that the decisions and pledges made are not going to be overturned in some arbitrary unscheduled recall election." This person then said to me, "You know, it's not good enough, Ken, if you get only 51%. Because 51% is not going to give confidence to people outside of Belchertown, who can put their money and build in any number of other towns. You need to raise the bar on this, and make sure that people in town understand that this is not a joke. This is not just a game of politics, that there are some very serious issues, and that the decision made in this recall is not going to just be effective for these three selectmen, but is going to affect the ability of the town to attract outside private investment for many years to come." So with that, I am going to say, "No, I do not intend to resign."
All right. Thank you, sir. And I'll let you recuse yourself there, sir. Okay. And similar to Mr. Berry, for obvious reasons, Mr. Elske is going to be recusing himself from the following discussion. So, once again, the Board of Selectmen has a responsibility, now that Mr. Elske, upon being served with a certified recall petition, and indicating that he will not resign, that the Board of Selectmen is obligated to set a recall election time and date. Previous motion was for May 16th, and Mr. Berry, obviously, you did not have any chance to comment with regards to the previous one. Is May 16th, is that agreeable to you for Mr. Elske's recall?
Is that a motion? Is there a motion paid and seconded?
No, I'm going to make them.
Okay. You can make the motion, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen, direct the Town Clerk, place on the ballot the municipal election taking place on Monday, May 16th, a vote called for recall of Kenneth E. Elske as selectman for the town of Belchertown. Further that in addition, an election ballot be placed on the ballot for the election of a person to replace Mr. Elske, should the ballot, the recall ballot be successful.
Okay. Motion made. Do I hear a second? Okay. I will second. So motion been made and seconded. Comments, questions?
Discussion on motion?
Yes, sir.
Let me just reiterate what I said earlier, that I think the recall is not a good idea for the town. And as you know, I serve as liaison to EDIC. We're in the process of a multimillion-dollar project going on with outside investment. It's going to require the support of our legislative team in Boston to leverage some of that money out of Boston to help with this project. Whenever our legislative team goes to Boston and asks for support, clearly, the people that they're speaking to hear a little bit about Belchertown, not much. And if the main thing they're hearing is this kind of activity, this kind of lack of stability, this kind of questionable action, then it puts a question mark in the middle of their forehead. So again, I think the recall is a bad idea. I think it has more negative consequences than positive. I don't think that Mr. Elske deserves to be recalled for one vote. I think it's absolutely wrong the use of the process.
All right. Other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of setting the recall election date for May 16th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, let the record show, motion passes 3-0-0. All right. Let me factor myself for a second. I'll get Mr. Elske. Okay. So importance with the recall acts of 1997, Mr. Elske has been served with a written notification of a certified recall petition. He has indicated on the record that he chooses not to resign, and the Board of Selectmen by a majority vote has indicated that that recall election for Mr. Elske will occur on May 16th concurrently with the regularly scheduled local election. That now brings us to Selectman Archibald, who obviously is not with us this evening. He is out of town. But what we have done, specifically, Town Administrator Mr. Broom has emailed Mr. Archibald, and I do have a record of the email and memorandum that was sent to Mr. Archibald, and I will read it for the record. It says, "Dear Mr. Archibald, please be advised, as per Chapter 126 of the 1997 Acts and Resolves provided for recall elections in the town of Belchertown, this is to notify you that a recall petition has been submitted and certified respective to your position as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Further advised, the Board of Selectmen will meet on Thursday, March 10th, 2011, at 7:45 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room on the first floor of Florence Memorial Hall for the purpose of formally acting on this petition. If you are unable to attend this meeting, please notify this office at your earliest convenience if you intend to resign your position as a member of the Board of Selectmen. If at all possible, please respond to this letter prior to the Board's meeting on Thursday evening, but certainly within the five days of this notification as provided under this Act. Mr. Archibald, via email, has responded. Please be advised, as of your letter dated March 8, 2011, I will not resign. He further states, I was elected by the voters of Belchertown to serve a three-year term, and that is what I intend to do." So per Town Council, this is in accordance with the Acts of 1997 to, in essence, really be the notification, the written notification of Selectman Archibald of the recall election. And his formal response indicating he will not resign is entered into the record. So similar with Mr. Berry's recall election and Mr. Elske's, it's now incumbent upon the Board of Selectmen to set the actual recall date. So at this point, I think I might just entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of Selectmen direct the Town Clerk to place on the ballot the municipal election taking place on Monday, May 16th, a vote called for the recall of George D. Archibald, Archibald?
Yes.
As a selectman for the town of Belchertown. Further that, in addition, an election ballot be placed on said ballot for the choice of a replacement for Mr. Archibald, should the recall vote be in the affirmative.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, let the record show, motion passes 4-0-0. So with regards to the petition for Mr. Archibald, he has been served written notification. He has provided a response that he chooses not to resign, and that has been entered into the record. And the Board of Selectmen have set the recall election date for May 16th. As a result, all three recalled petitions and the subsequent elections have been, all the obligations of the Board of Selectmen have been satisfied. So at that point, I believe we are all set with the open portion. But I will, since we do have some members of the press, I will open it up for questions from the press. Mr. Seward?
We've heard from Selectman Berry and Selectman Elske regarding what their thoughts of the recall are. I guess I'm wondering what your thoughts are of the recall, and Mr. Barnett's?
Well, with the recall, I mean, obviously, there's an Act that was passed back in 1997, and the petitioners and the subsequent signers of the petition, certainly within their rights to be able to do such. With regards to the motives and whether it's good for Belchertown or bad for Belchertown, I really don't have an opinion on that. I, bottom line, have a job. My job is to make sure that the town of Belchertown moves according to the Acts of 1997, to make sure we don't open the town up for any legal liability, and that, in essence, the will of the town is heard on May 16th.
Mr. Barnett?
I, I'm unhappy about it. I think that we're now entering into a very busy part of our season. I'm very concerned about municipal aggregation. I'm very concerned about people on this board who are involved in that. Stay with it, and don't let up, because it's important for the people in Belchertown. I'm worried about it. I'm concerned about the EDIC program. And I'm concerned about our Belchertown. I'm concerned about people staying who are up for recall, behavioral or being, they may be willing, but having the same drive that they have before. So I'm concerned about these things. Recalls, anytime they occur, are unpleasant things, and don't do much to pull the town together. And that's what we need to do these days. The reason for the recall is that one vote, which in my opinion should have happened a week earlier. That one vote has been taken now. We're dealing with it. And I suspect, before a month or so had passed since that original meeting we had back in the auditorium a month ago, I suspect that the vote that did pass regarding the chief, who have been passed anyway, we would have worked that out. I like to thank that. So no, I'm not happy about the recall. I'm not happy for what it does, how it puts the, what it does to make the town look undivided and messed up. We actually, I think, this town, before even I was on this board, and that I'm very long, just a few months, I think that the town of Belchertown is... long, just two months, think that the town of Belchertown's governance has been one of the best in the area. I'd be willing to back it up against Board of Selectmen all around. Now, withstanding their objection to that, I would be willing to do that. Always been proud of the way that we have been able to pull our budget together and get things done without big two-and-a-half overrides. We don't have those things that other towns have, and we still get it done. This is a disruption, but it's a disruption that people have the right to do. I just hope that the next few months, the next two months up till May, are a period in which people hold their heads and try to be understanding of each other, that we get through this without too much difficulty, and that at the end, Belchertown comes out doing it. I probably said more than I should have. Everyone has told me to keep my mouth shut, so it's best that I can do in that category.
Yes, sir. Actually, could you just identify your affiliation for the record?
From CBS 3 in Springfield.
Thank you.
I had a question about the election. My understanding is you're going to have a part of the ballot which will be the recall part and also the regular election. So say Mr. Berry loses the recall, he could still win the election? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. You know, in essence, and in fact, one of the reasons why we entertain each petition separately is they are considered three separate elections, three separate pieces. So you will actually see a recall of James A. Berry. Yes, no? Check your box. Beneath that will be candidates running to fill a vacancy if such a vacancy occurs through the recall. Of course, in Mr. Berry's circumstance, his term is up anyway, so you will see the quote-unquote "regular local election" ballot, which would be Mr. Berry running for his spot and anyone else who so chooses to run for that particular three-year term. And then subsequently, of course, you will see the same questions for Mr. Elstein in the same section for anyone who's looking to fill a potential vacancy, and then once again, the same thing for Mr. Archibald. And then you'll have the rest of the ballot, which would be school committee, planning board, the, I'm just trying to think, maybe assessors, I think the assessors also are on the ballot this year.
Are you worried about voter confusion at all?
No.
So that's definitely...
Few questions. I'll tell you how we're going to set the ballot. The ballot will be the, the first part of the ballot will be the same. First ballot, part of the ballot will be as if it's never occurred. All the people, all the positions which are up for reelection, election will be placed, and all the candidates will be there in alphabetical order, just as though this had never occurred. And after that, at that end of ballot, on the opposite side, we will have the three recall questions. And then, under those questions, will be the candidates who are running to replace the individual if the recall is successful. So shall Mr. so-and-so be recalled? And a candidate, yes or no? And then, if Mr. X is recalled, you choose the person who wishes, who you want to replace. There may be one, there may be none, there may be ten, I don't know how many names. These are people who will have to come out now and take out nomination papers. That recall vote, if it's a no, we don't even bother coming to the ones below that. If it's a yes, then we have to come to the ones and the ones that most replaces the individual who is recalled.
Now, if that first, if there is a recall, and, I don't mean to pick on you, Mr. Berry, if Mr. Berry loses the recall to someone, and then he loses the election to a different candidate, is there have to be a runoff between those two candidates?
No, the recall is for my current position.
Okay.
In his case...
Period, which ends on May 16th. So the recall of me is absolutely worthless, it's useless, it has zero effect, other than a public slap in the face. That's the only intention of it. Either the people who chose to do it were ignorant of the regulations or were purposely vindictive, because you cannot remove me from office before May 16th with a recall. You can't do it, it's impossible. Even if I lost a recall, I would be recalled for about 35 seconds, because my term of office exists, ends that same day. If I were to win the regular election, then I would be sworn in as a new selectman, or I might lose that election.
Okay, so if you lost the recall...
It has no effect.
And, but say you lost the other election, does that mean that other person is a selectman for two hours before?
Yes. Well, I'm told a new person's sworn in.
Yes. Because there is a regular ballot, if you will, there is a regular three-year term that would then be run, and that would be, the winner of that particular election would then serve the three-year term.
Yes.
I have a question in regard to Mr. Berry's position.
Okay, and actually, if you could just identify yourself...
Oh, sorry, in the East Village of the Hampshire Gazette. If, from what I understand, if a candidate, or if a selectman is recalled, they are prevented from running for office for two years?
No, actually, that's an appointment. They cannot be, if they lose a recall election, they cannot be appointed for a two-year period.
Oh, thank you.
Like the Cancellation Commission or the Finance Committee or some of those other appointed positions.
But it would not preclude running for selectmen, and it would not preclude running for Planning Board or the School Committee or the Electoral Commission.
Other questions from the press? Mr. Seward.
Has there been an increase in voter registration since the recalls, petitions have been submitted?
Not to my reflection, no. I don't, not anything more than usual, no. But that's too early for that. That always occurs, oh, from 20 to 30 days before the election. So we have up until 20 days before the election to, we did have people come in today to get a batch of applications for registration, and applications for absentee ballots, whatever that means.
I know everyone has taken a great deal of time to try and explain things thoroughly. Is it worthy of mentioning why we had a meeting tonight in order to circumvent missing a deadline, number one? And number two, just so you understand, Jim is up for reelection this year anyways. He's the only member of the Board. So in Jim's case, it does not carry over to Archie and Ken. Just so that's clear.
And as Berry indicated, the reason why we had to have the meeting on Thursday, which is obviously unusual, especially since we have a scheduled meeting on Monday, is so we can satisfy the deadlines. If we had waited till Monday, we would not have been able to have the recall elections occur during the regular local elections on the May 16th. Thus, that's why we're here this evening to be able to address this in a timely fashion. Other questions from the press? Go ahead, Mike.
Any plans, you said in a press release that you plan to lead the campaign against the recall. Do you have any specific plans to...
At least my own.
Yeah.
Specific plans?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're gonna, there are basically several different ways of approaching this kind of election, as I see it. One is to talk about how bad it will be for the town if the recall is approved. Second is to run on my own record. In effect, because of that second part of the recall ballot, I'm running for reelection a year early. So I'll be talking about my record and defending it, and people will have the opportunity to look at my opponent or opponents and decide whether they would rather have me or one of them as their selectman. And the whole question of whether it's appropriate to have a recall election based on some vague comments of people aren't, you know, doing what's best for the town or something, as opposed to something really specific like criminal activity or malfeasance or something like that, is a third area that we would talk about. I'm very confident that the people of Belchertown are going to ask good questions and get good answers on these topics, and I think, as I said before, I think it's really important for the town that these recall votes are defeated and defeated substantially.
Other questions?
Is there any, oh, Amy, I missed that, no. Is there any concern by anyone, I guess Mr. Berry and Mr. Elstein, and I guess the other two, if the people who take out nomination papers to run to replace you or run against you in the recall, that they may be running for one specific reason and not have the interest of the town at heart? Has that crossed anyone's mind?
We don't even know who's running at the moment. I mean, one or two people who took out papers, but I can't really...
I would not want to characterize someone else as known as running. I would hope that no one would run as a one-issue candidate. I think in general, that's bad for government, to have a one-issue candidate, but if someone were to do that, well, then, so be it. I have the list of the 800 names of people who signed the petitions. I'm sure they know that it's public record, and you can all get a copy if you wish. And as I go through, I saw quite a few names of people I recognized. So I called them up, I said, "What's going on?" They said, "What do you mean, what's going on?" "Well, you signed a recall paper for me." "No, no, no, they told me I was signing a petition to save our chief." So, now, certainly not all of these are that case. Certainly some of these are absolutely people who want to recall me. I have no doubt about that. But as Mr. Elstein said, part of the campaign is to reach out to these folks, let them understand what it is they were actually signing up for, give them an opportunity to ask us questions. Is it really something I did, or is it just one issue? And have a conversation with all 800 folks eventually, and find out what is it that we can do to make Belchertown much better.
I might add that the irony of all this is that as we sit here today in March, this was not the case in February, but as we sit here in March, of the three people who are being recalled, two of them voted for the chief. Two voted for the chief, one voted against the chief. All three of us, I mean, there's a certain level of insanity in this.
Do you believe...
Or inconsistency, anyway.
Do you believe that people are just uneducated about the way the process is, the whole process?
I think there's quite a bit of emotion involved, especially in front of the Stop and Shop, where you saw crowds of people there. I'm not, I certainly would not, well, one of the nice women I talked to on the phone was absolutely shocked that she'd signed it, because she signed the back of the petition, it didn't even say Jim Berry except on the front, and she's all embarrassed, "I didn't read it." I said, "Well, okay, so don't worry about it, just make sure you register the vote and show up. It's okay. Don't get excited. It's okay, we'll survive this."
Recall is so rare, though, that everybody, all of us, our attorneys, are educating ourselves about what this process is about. This is our 250th anniversary, and for presumably the very first time in 250 years, we're having a recall. Over what?
Mr. Berry, if you believe that there are signatures on that petition that were garnered falsely, why don't you challenge that petition?
Couple of reasons. One of which is, it is best for the town to get us behind us as soon as possible. If I were to challenge every signature, what would I gain? A delay of the election? We're having an election on May 16th anyway, let's do this. And quite frankly, in terms of my personal position, they could all vote to recall me, as long as they vote for me for reelection, it doesn't really matter. So it's not worth the time, the effort, the expense, the pain to the town of going through that technique. We have a process in place, we've got an election set, let's go forward.
Not to mention the legal cost, not to mention the legal cost for the town to defend a lawsuit against these, and they probably have enough signatures there.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not saying by any means that the majority of these are taken under duress or under false pretense. I don't mean to imply that whatsoever. I will say, quite a few people have approached me and said, "I didn't realize what I was doing." And so we're going to educate a lot more people, and some of these votes will definitely change, guaranteed.
One more question from the press.
Where are you on your contract negotiations with Chief Fox?
Contract negotiations are ongoing.
Ongoing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will open it up briefly for a couple of questions from the public. Frank, just identify yourself.
Frank Almiron, 328 North Libberty. Two questions, I'll ask the two questions, and you can answer it. One, how much is this costing the town? And the second one is, what's the procedure to amend this Act of 1997? Because I find it divisive at best.
Well, for the first, I mean, I don't think we're going to know the costs until, obviously, the dust has settled, but obviously, there has been, what I'll refer to as soft costs, which is additional time from, you know, myself, Mr. Broom, numerous people in town staff, certainly the town clerk's office, the registrars, but there's also been hard costs, which is our consultations with Copeland and Page. And as I said, frankly, we probably won't know those exact figures for at least a whole while, until we start to get the invoices. And then as far as the recall, I mean, obviously, it can be brought up, certainly through a citizen's petition at an annual town meeting. It's the quote-unquote easiest way to do it, because I believe there's only 10 certified signatures that are needed for a petition to bring an article before annual town meeting. And to be honest with you, I do not know if that would take a simple majority to amend it, or if it would take a two-thirds vote. If that's something, we probably have to ask the town moderator, and then ultimately maybe Town Council as well. Other questions? Okay, hearing none at this point, I will adjourn our open session, not to reconvene.
Thank you all.